All right, thank you. I'm calling the meeting to order. We are running a little late here, but this is the 2:30 Public Works Committee meeting. And we'll move straight into number two, and I, please forgive me if I pronounce this wrong. Yatika Starfields, appointment to the Arts Commission. Are you here? Yes. Would you like to come up? Replacing Brian Shen, whose term expires December 1st, 2025. And from the heart of Tulsa, District 9, welcome.
I love this, the heart of Tulsa.
Not the head, the heart.
I know, that's District 5.
Anyway, feel free to tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, well, it's good to be here. It's pronounced Yatika.
Yatika, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it's a Muskogee name. It means interpreter, listener. From here, I'm Osage, Muskogee in Cherokee. I'm an artist here. I've been here for the past eight years. What brought me here back was to be a part of the Tulsa Artist Fellowship Program, where I worked on my own studio practices as a painter, as a public artist. I've been able to have opportunities and travel all over the world and do some public art projects with communities and work with artists from all over. And it's been nice to get a lot of valuable information in working in those collaborations and working with communities. And as an Indigenous and Native artist, it's been really nice and great to see how these kind of stories and cultural influences can really integrate itself into communities when worked well and when done well. And so I'm just happy to be a part of the community that I'm from, to really invigorate those stories and conversations that I feel like sometimes are often left out and missing. So.
That's awesome.
That's about who I am.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Yes, I really appreciate. I love a lot of your murals, like the one that's up on the Hub and Club, that's where you are.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for the public art.
Yeah, it's an old one. Hopefully I'll be painting over that soon.
I feel like I don't want to see it anymore.
Yeah, I mean, you know, murals have a timeline. And too, as an artist grows, you know, you can always do more and more to really kind of change it up and create more stories. So, but at the moment, working on various projects. I have a studio downtown and I'm represented by a gallery in New York City. And I just had my second solo show there, so I'm always working to creating pieces. And it's always keeping me pretty busy, so.
That's fantastic. Well, thank you so much for the willingness to serve. And if you, we will be voting on you or approving you, I guess, at the council meeting on 5/20, on May 21st. At 5:00, if you would like to be there, you can, but you don't have to. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're done now.
I'm burning out, so.
I know, it's super hot in here.
I don't want y'all to see my gun.
Can you give me that?
May 21st.
As a quick important plug, Yatika's the featured artist for Native American Day this year.
Yes.
Oh, great.
Making sure everyone knows that Cheryl Tech is going.
Get back to her.
I know, right?
Anyway, it was nice meeting everyone. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
You look good.
We'll see you on the 21st. All right, number three, Nathaniel Benyon. Are you here?
I am.
Oh, there you are. Okay, reappointment.
You can, you can sit there. Thank you.
Any empty seats?
I don't bite.
I believe that. We're about to have some data on that, though.
Reappointment to the Infrastructure Development Advisory Board. Your, the term expires September 30th, 2027, from CD2. So, tell us a little bit about you, please.
Okay, my name's Nathaniel Benyon. I live in the Tulsa Hills area. We moved here in 2012. My wife is native of Tulsa. I was president of a refrigeration company where we construct food retail places like Costco, Whole Foods, and Walmarts. I fell in love with our city immediately. I love our town. I love its future and I love its culture. And so we, when we built, we first lived in Midtown. And so when we built a house, I just wanted to make sure that we found a lot within our city. Was able to ask, was that a, at one time, and asked, how I could, I said, I wanted to serve our city. And infrastructure was not something I thought I would get asked to be on initially, because it's happy something I really wanted to be on, because I'm a nerd like that. And in the arts, I would be fine too. I have a jazz degree. I'm the only, I'm the only president of a construction company with a jazz undergrad in jazz in the country, guarantee it. But.
Such a popular major.
It's a very pop, well, it paid the bills. It paid the degrees. So, 2020, last, two years ago, I bought the company. We've been in downtown Tulsa for 25 years. We bought the Staba Buildings and then, or moved there and have zero plans of leaving and just continuing. We've put an office in Oklahoma City and we're going to Fayetteville in Wichita, but we're always going to be a Tulsa company.
Good.
That's great.
And I'll talk about my daughter, Led, much longer, so let's just stop there. I'm married and got a daughter who just went defeat, undefeated in lacrosse. And so I'm pretty proud about that.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Well, great. You all have any questions for him?
Midi, attack, or defense?
She is in second grade, and so they do all three. And she is a killer at it.
That's great.
No, we taught on offense this year. But she is going to be attack. She's a good scorer.
Thank you for your, for your service. We've not met before today, but I'd love to get to know you a little bit better. You live in the Tulsa Hills area.
I know we.
Go ahead, please.
No, no, no.
What instrument did you play?
I still play. I played trumpet, but I play guitar and organ, B3 organ. And I still play in bands. There's a new band called The Holdouts coming out. And I'm, I'm the only guy with a job in the back that doesn't play music, but I'm the old man who plays B3. I played trumpet in Oregon and sing and what they call multi-instrumentalists.
Right. Well, I love it. I'm, I'm an all-state jazz drummer.
I was a all-state trumpet player.
There you go.
Band nurse, we gotta do one.
Yeah.
You two get together.
A pleasure.
And thanks for your, I know who you are, Don Jean, real well. And thank you for your service. Looking forward to seeing any way I can succeed in our area.
Thank you so much.
Great. Well, we will be approving your appointment, reappointment on the 21st at the 5:00 meeting. You're welcome to be there, but it isn't necessary.
I, I appreciate it. I'll look at, in the calendar. And I thank you for the opportunity to help our city in some way.
Yes, well, thank you for your service.
You got it. Thank you.
And you don't bite.
I don't. See, I told you. It's the other side of the table.
She had lunch.
No, I didn't. Okay, number four, resolution authorizing payment of $1,185,000 and some change to Rocket Properties. And Anthony Sutton, attorney of law for sinking fund, is a payment of appeal cost. And who do we have here?
Good afternoon, councilors. I'm Chad Becker from Treasury, way down here, I feel like, today. As always, here to provide assurance that there is a sufficient cash balance in the sinking fund to pay this judgment ahead of the levy placement on the property tax rolls. Judgment has been approved already by the court and the mayor. And with council's approval, finance will issue payment to the claimant and forward all the necessary paperwork to the county to levy repayment to the sinking fund over a three-year period. And Mr. Bond is here from Legal to discuss the case details.
Thank you so much. So, Lawson Bond, Legal Department. And this is the last payment on this case. Is the, is the good news that I have. But it is additional monies going to resolve this case. We had a hearing April 15th on appeal-related attorney fees and costs. And this was the result of that hearing with Judge of Fortune and needing to abide by the judge's ruling on that. So, it's, it's appeal-related costs and fees and then an amount for the ad政 taxes, reimbursing back to January of 2016, when it was determined the taking occurred. And so with this payment, we will then have title to the property.
Great. Any questions from anybody?
As long as we're really done with this one.
Yes, we're really done.
Then we're good.
This is a very expensive piece of land.
Yeah.
Yes.
No kidding. Okay, we're really done. You're dismissed.
Thank you for working on it and making sure that the appeal process is done and over with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody asked.
Do you want to give us a balance?
78.9 million.
Seventy-eight point nine million.
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
It's a broad guess now. Like a random number generator?
Yeah. Okay, number five, ordinance reopening a portion of a drainage easement requested by Brook Havenous, City of Tulsa, for property located at 5959 East, I'm sorry, South 94th East Place. The easement reopening request is for a drainage way for waters, Domingo Creek. Requesting waiver of city charter council rules and order of business and requesting approval and adoption on first reading. Mr. Zachary, welcome.
Good afternoon, Paul Zachary, Public Works. This item, if you remember, got tabled from last week because we had an address transposed on the RFA documents versus what was on the agenda. So with that, we are asking, we know that you're off next week, and we are, this is timely to try to keep this from being permanently kept open. We need to correct this issue. There's been some grading and drainage that has gone out there that has created some issues for adjacent properties. It's a reserve and it's a drainage easement. And we need to get it reopened. So it's for those purposes. And we will, are working with the landowner and developer to make it right with his neighbors. And this was the best way to get everybody's attention, is to close this. And when it was closed, and now we're going to reopen it, and then we're going to talk about reshaping this at a later date. And you can see, this is, well, north is to your left. Yeah, that's all right. It's just basically, it's in a big reserve area, and it was a large lot in there. And once he started doing the grading and things like that, there's no way to cure it without having this reopened. So, but the neighbor immediately to the left has been experiencing some drainage issues and damage that she had not had before we did this. So, staff is recommending that we reopen this. And we would ask that you do waive your rules and go ahead and approve this, so that we can get this done and not carry this on into June.
Any questions? Thank you. I was making notes. Okay, number six, ordinance amending Tulsa Revised Ordinance, Title 49 Administrative Permit and License Fees, Chapter 3 Building Permit Fees, etc., all the fees, fees, fees. I'm not going to read all this, because you're going to explain it to us, Mr. Skates. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilors, Michael Skates, Development Services Director. This is Title 49. This is our administrative fees and license permits. Ordinance, we have four items in this ordinance recommending changes to increase either add fees for a certain process, change fees, or change the language. We have four areas. The first one, the first two are in my department. The first one is a program called Fast Track. Fast Track is a program by which we can accelerate building alterations for residential properties. We used to have this, and it was kind of a catch-all for everything, and it, and it didn't work. And so we, we stopped doing it years ago, but we want to bring it back. And it's associated with just building alterations or interior remodels. And we're doing this as part of two, two reasons. One, associated with the mayor's housing program. And one of those programs, which the mayor came and spoke to you guys about a while back, was the Community Builder Program. And so we really expect, through the Community Builder Program and the Housing Program, to see a lot of homes being revitalized or renovated, I guess I would say. And then this would be a part of that process, that they could come in and they could get a permit, you know, in as little as 30 minutes, but same day. And we have the staff that would sit there with them, make notes, and then work to put it in the system, get the permit issued. So that's what the first item is. The second item is, again, associated with different types of projects in our Infrastructure Development Program. And we wanted to create a minor construction permit. We experience a lot of folks out there that either are working on something, or they've been identified by code enforcement or some other division of a department of not being in compliance, like raising a manhole some distance. Or they have some, some area of simple drainage, and they just need to make a connection to like the back of an inlet on a street. And so we have been kicking this around for a little while, and we think we've been able to put it together. And so we want to create a minor construction permit. But it's a $250 fee, instead of making people do the complete IDP process. So this is a simplified, almost like a fast-track process that allow people to come in and provide their bond and insurance, and provide a drawing, that then we can get over to field engineering to make these things happen much faster than what they normally would, would, would do. So that's the second item. The third item is, is related to inspection and testing fees. And so this item really is coming out of field engineering. And there's two parts to it. One is the watershed permit application fee on page three. And then the second part of that is on page four, and that's associated with water meters and detector checks. So, so there's additional fee there for those processes. And I can say on the water meters, you know, with the, the new meters, they have ports on them. And so the folks have to go out and they have to connect to those meters and test that meter to make sure that it's operating properly. And that takes time, but it also, it has to happen quickly in order to allow us to get the certificate of occupancy to be issued on houses or commercials. So that's the third item. And then the fourth item is, kind of carries over from Section 1600 and, which is, which is closures and construction agreement. That comes out of Public Works as well, through the Utility Coordination Division. And so they're looking to just increase their fees to cover their costs associated with those various construction agreements and closures. I'd be glad to answer any questions that y'all may have.
I have one real quick. On the minor construction permit, would this have alleviated the problem you've been having on Brookside in my area with that manhole?
It would have. It would have. And we actually, on that one, we actually had Kirk Dodd at that point with his contractor, where we were ready to send it to field engineering as a minor construction permit. But at the last minute, the mayor's administration and the Water and Sewer Director were able to come up with a different solution whereby which saw with the sewer operation maintenance were able to go out and raise that manhole once they realized it was only going to be like eight inches. You know, originally, we thought it was going to be a couple feet to level that ground. And so, but, but yes, this, this would allow us to be able to handle those kind of situations on the fly without having to take people through the entire IDP process, which is, one, much more expensive and just takes time, you know, because it, you know, and when these things really just, it's just one drawing.
Right.
Very simple to do.
Right. I'm glad to see that, because I think especially in Midtown, those older areas, especially when it comes to the manholes, I mean, half the time, we don't even know where they are.
Well, my, my IDP manager, who is sitting back here, he, he's been thinking about this for a couple years. And, you know, as other divisions of departments, you know, are out there in the field looking at stuff, you know, and inspecting, and they're finding a lot of different things that have occurred. And a lot of times, they get referred back to us. And this will give us that tool to really help people or help contractors, whoever it may be, come up with a good solution to resolve the matter cost-effectively.
That's great. Thank you for doing that. Councilor Bellis?
Yeah, two questions, but for someone to clarify. Could, would you mind reiterating what's changed in the expediting fee section?
Which section are you referring to?
Section 305, where it has expediting fee, and this is professional home builders, what's, is that completely new, or what's been updated there?
You talking about item B on 305, expediting fee?
Yeah, that whole section.
Yeah, what we've done, what we've done there is, as I said earlier.
I supposed to double check?
We're, we're bringing back a portion of the residential fast track for alterations only.
Okay.
And that's associated with the mayor's housing program.
Right.
And a program which he spoke to you all about, about Community Builder Program, which is trying to help community builders around the city that have number of lots that we believe that they're boarded up.
Right.
And that we believe that through this program, that they'll, they'll be, with other incentives, they'll be able to take those boards off.
Right.
Replace windows and renovate that house through this program. So it expedites that process, which normally would be maybe a 10-day review process. This does it same day.
Okay.
And, and the second part of that is the commercial priority review. We're just asking for an increase in fee to make those match, because we already have a priority, a commercial priority review. And basically, that, that's the same thing. It's an alteration permit with no change of use. And we do that in three days or less.
What was the fee before?
The, the fee before for, for, for the residential tract, when it, when we used to have it, was like $200 or $250. But we, we got rid of that years ago, because it was a, it got kind of elevated to a catch-all, which allowed everything to be in there. And what happened was, one, I don't have, I don't have enough staff to administer the program. And so we would have everybody in this queue to try to do a residential fast track. And at that time, it was a three-day turnaround. And, you know, we were weeks out from even being able to review it. So it just didn't work. So we just stopped. So.
And, and then for the professional home builders, I'm just curious, what's the definition? Like, what does that, is that, what does that mean? Like, what's a professional home builder?
A professional home builder is a builder who has gone through various training certifications through the, how the. through the, how the, the Tulsa Home Builders Association.
Okay.
Or through the National Home Builders Association. And so, they have a certain number of hours, like CEUs, so to speak, that they have to get to be certified. And, you know, that program was created by the Home Builders Association back in the 80s, I believe. So, we've had that program a while.
Right.
And I think right now, I think we have, the last I heard, we have 19 professional builders in that program. We'd like to see more.
Yeah. Because this is like TSA pre-check for permitting.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
That's what I was just like, I was trying to decide. Because I was trying to think through where's one of those is not necessarily offsetting other people not having expeditious processes, but it is helping.
Yeah, so they, they, they get their certifications, you know, no different than like what we do through ICC, but they have other programs where they get certified. What that does, it allows them to turn in only a site plan. And so, we don't get like building plans for their houses because they're certified. And so, they're certified through the HPA, through that program.
Right, okay. Thank you. That's all, I was just trying to clarify how it worked or that, you know, it wasn't like offsetting other people's permitting processes to have more of these.
Oh, yeah. Makes sense. Councilor Gilbert?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Are we, so are you just reclassifying some of these permits, fees, or are you, any of them increasing? I mean, the only one that I got that you mentioned was the 250 for the infrastructure development. So, are any of them increasing? Are we keeping them?
The only one that's increasing is the Item C, which is the commercial priority review from 450 to 500.
Okay.
And we're increasing that to match the residential fast track because basically, they're the same thing.
Right.
Just in two different areas.
Okay.
The other one, the residential fast track's a new item. And then, the minor, the IDP minor construction permit is a new item as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for trying to clean this up and help with this whole permitting.
Sure.
Process. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you guys for letting me come today and visit with you on this. Thank you.
Number seven, ordinance closing a portion of a utility easement requested by Drew Beach for property located at 10820 South Toledo Avenue, Dumbbrier Estates. The easement closure request is for future building plans.
Ma'am, Paul's Accrue Public Works, again. This is a private development that wants to add on to a home. The utility easement has been requested to be closed or a portion of it for future building plans. We reviewed this with city staff, representatives, and everybody that has a right to occupy that easement, and we did not get a single objection. So, on the drawing, you can see it's just a portion of it. So, if it is needed in the future around that, we ought to be able to do that without interfering with him being able to improve his property. It was, he just couldn't do it. So, we are pleased that he is doing this as opposed to us finding it as an encroachment later and having to deal with it. So, we celebrate this.
Yes.
It's exciting, isn't it?
It is.
You guys need some excitement today. It's kind of.
Thank you, Paul. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We never expected.
And number eight, presentation and update with representatives from the Family Safety Center regarding programs. Councilor Gilbert, would you like to?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I had asked the Family Safety Center to come give us an update. They do wonderful things. And unfortunately, I had to go through their services and, but they give such a, not for my personal family, but from others. But anyhow, they do a great service to the, not just to the residents of Tulsa, but the surrounding areas. And I am very excited to have them moving to District 5, which is truly the heart of Tulsa with all the different nonprofit organizations that are stationed in District 5, reside in District 5, and give so much to the residents. So, turn it over to you.
Okay. Do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Cheryl Helenauer. I'm the chairman of the board for Family Safety Center.
And Suzanne Stewart, CEO of the Family Safety Center. And thank you for having us. You know, this is always fun for us because there's so much good things, there are so many good things that go on in our community that sometimes get overshadowed by a lot of the negative news that's out there. Domestic violence, sexual assault, survivors of crime, all of experience, some pretty horrific things over the last several years. Oklahoma is known for having high incidence of domestic violence, sexual assault in our state. Currently, I think we're ranked number two in the nation for women killed by men. However, those things are changing. And I can tell you, organizations like ours and like our soon-to-be neighbor, Child Advocacy Network, and all the partners that work with us are making a huge difference in those areas. For those of you that have been, have visited us before, we are currently located in the basement of the Tulsa Police Municipal Courts Building. And thank you, City of Tulsa, for sharing that space with us for the last 12 years, actually, since 2013. And even though one of the doors don't work right now and the toilet keeps flushing, everything else is doing great.
Every few minutes.
Every few minutes it flushes.
That's better than the alternate.
Yes, it is. And we have been so thrilled to be there. And you've also continued partnering with us through this project as well. And so, one of the things we wanted to do is talk about, a little bit about what's coming up for the future for us and say our thanks to you for participating with us and being so supportive of us through the years. This will actually be the 20th year of operation for the Family Safety Center. We were one of the first 15 communities awarded a grant through the Department of Justice to form a family justice center in the country. And there are now 350 family justice centers throughout the nation and the world. There's actually a European Alliance of Family Justice Centers. There are justice centers in Mexico and in South America. There are justice centers that are being discussed for the African continent. So, you know, it's a movement that has spread. And we are one of about 50 affiliated centers or certified centers in the country right now. And we have a lot of people to thank for that, and one of which, one of whom is our deep, deep partnership with the City of Tulsa. So, we say thank you for that. So, our new location is at 2829 South Sher, former location for CAN. This is a rendering of our building. A lot of things, not much has changed about the look. Some of the names that you'll see on the building have changed. But this is the kind of interior we're looking at. We're at the point now where we're at 50% construction. And we hope to be completing that in September with a move-in in October. And even with all of the rain that we've experienced this last month, we're still pretty well on track for that. This is a very simple rendering of what we are planning for, the colors and the feel and the aesthetics of the facility. This goes through a long litany of the types of areas that we have. For those of you that are unfamiliar with us, we house 13 different agencies, partnerships within our facility right now. So, while the Family Safety Center may have 15 employees, we actually have all of these other partners who participate with us in our program. We use this as an illustrative diagram that talks about how we are the hub of that wheel. The Family Safety Center itself, our staff, we do client intake, initial navigation services. We have staff that are in partnership with a grant at the district courthouse. But our role is to make sure that, kind of like conducting an orchestra, because I'm, or a band, because I'm an old music person too, by the way. Lori knows this.
Yeah.
And kind of like conducting a band or an orchestra choir, you've got a conductor who usually has the whole score in front of them when they're directing. And each instrument has a one-sheet piece of paper that has their part on it. And the role of the conductor is essentially to keep everybody moving along at the same pace. That's what we do with our partners who are in this building with us. And these, golly, it's not very big and I don't know how to increase that size. Is that F3? But we have partners with our main victim service provider, Divus. Oh, here we go. Divus does civil legal services and advocacy and childcare, assistance with emergency protective orders, safety planning, danger assessment. We have legal aid services who also provide legal services. We've got TPD's Family Violence Unit, of course, and we have Sex Crimes or Special Victims Unit and the Victim Advocacy Center that are with us in the building right now and will be coming with us to the new site. We have the Tulsa County Sheriff's Office and a victim advocate also with us at this point in time. Victim witness advocates will be coming with us from the DA's office. And we will be housing occasionally a victim witness advocate with the U.S. Attorney's Office. We also have the Tulsa Police Department, same nurses, forensic documentation. We house the protective order process for all of Tulsa County. So, if you were filing for an emergency protective order in Tulsa County, you would come through us. And that process goes from us to the courts, to the judge, and then back to the victim. And then, we have staff.
Courtroom.
Yeah. And then, we have staff that are in partnerships, as I mentioned, with the courts that are housed at the district court that work on our dedicated domestic violence dockets and the Court Mentor Court Program. The Tulsa District Court, because we've been so successful with our dedicated DB docket, is now mentoring for other jurisdictions in the country through a grant from the Department of Justice in order to help them learn how to handle an accountability docket like we have here in Tulsa. In the new building, we will actually have a courtroom that has been built into the facility and will be utilized by that protective order docket. I wanted to share some updated information. This information that's in this PowerPoint is pre-bid, pre-construction bid budgeting. And since the time that this was done at $29 million, we actually have cut the budget back to $24,400. And this is our actual operating, construction, and facility budget at this point. If you all would take one and pass it down, and we'll leave one for staff so you all can put it on the site. But our construction bids last year, when they came in, came in actually $5 million lower than what we had expected in terms of our actual construction costs. So, timing was right. I'm glad we're not doing that process right now. And for all intensive, all the aluminum, all the steel, all the structural stuff, everything is all already on site. And so, we don't anticipate any additional costs for those things. This is an example of the square footage of this, each of the different areas. One of the things that people were so concerned about is that moving from about 18,000 square feet to 65,000 square feet sounds like a big, huge jump. But when you consider that we have no client service space right now and we're actually adding client service space as well as expanding capacity to house other partners on site, we fully expect to have anywhere from 100 to 110 individuals working in the facility at any given time with extended hours of operation and around 30,000 individuals coming through each year, in particular, if they're utilizing the protective order docket. That docket handles around 100 cases a day, five days a week. So, it's pretty robust in terms of its capacity. And then, this is another look at some of the areas. One of the things we're so excited about is that we will have individual interview and training rooms, individual interview and intake rooms. Right now, our space is a big open space that's divided by shower curtains. And, you know, it's not what you call optimal for providing services to our folks. So, we'll have individual rooms there, a really robust medical center. We'll be able to handle same exams as well as forensic documentation. We'll have partnerships expanded with OU Tulsa and the Community School of Medicine, who will be working with us on residents, who will come in and work with us getting people hooked up into the healthcare system. We're hoping to house additional services like DHS, TANF, SNAP, those kinds of things that are going to really be beneficial to some of our population. We're also working with tribal services for victim services and law enforcement with both the Cherokee Nation and the Muskogee Creek Nation. So, that the area that is set up for law enforcement, which is on the second floor, will have space for all of the Tulsa Police Department units, advocates, et cetera, plus working space if needed for FBI, U.S. Attorney, and for tribal law officers, law enforcement officers when they're working places together. So, lots of opportunity for that. This is the first floor. The big blue area is the court section. Actually, there's two large areas for childcare. The green area is health and medicine. And then, all the purple are all our client service spaces. Family and Children's Services has been a partner with us for mental health and crisis services. We're hoping for that to continue into the new facility. And then, the second floor, the green is all what we call law enforcement. Blue is advocacy and attorney services. Civil legal assistance is the number one request for assistance. And we are not even close to being able to cover those requests. The blue, kind of teal section is administrative and additional partner services. And then, the yellow is training and general public space. Here's where we are now, as of 5:21. So, you'll see, this is the, this is a view looking from Sheridan East. So, that gray pipe section on the left is the conference center area, and the front door is just immediately to the right of that. You can see that all of this stuff is coming up so quickly. Yeah, so that's where we are with the, with the building itself. Cheryl, you want to talk about our funding?
Oh, okay. Our, our funding, our fundraising, you know, this has been several-year process for us and we've been very successful. We have raised all the $400,000.
Wow.
So, we lack $400,000 to have reached our goal. And so, we think we'll have that within the next maybe four months. And we'll be ready, can complete and have, you know, bought the building as we move in in October. So, it's very exciting. The community has helped tremendously. The foundations have stepped up. Individuals have stepped up. This is such a needed service for the City of Tulsa. There are so many people that are affected by domestic violence. And it doesn't matter what color you are or what socioeconomic demographic you come from. It affects all of us. So, our board is very passionate about what we do. And all of our board, everybody that sits on our board, has been affected by domestic violence one way or another. So, they are very passionate. So, it has been interesting.
We have about $2 million out in asks right now on that $400 million net. We're going to be very successful at it. And I know, you know, questions are, well, what about operating costs? Have you all thought about that? And so, you know, we are going back to some funders to say, thank you very much for your capital. We would like to talk to you now about operating. But we have several asks out for that already. And we are going to go back to some funders who've already stepped up. And if there's any leftover, if we actually raise, get the full $2 million out of the, you know, and we already covered our $400,000, would they allow us to use that for future operating endowment funds? So, we do have plans for that.
Other good news is that our federal grants have not, to date, been affected by anything. So, we're still moving forward. Yes, knock on wood. And that's a, that's a very good, very good news. I think this is such a win for Tulsa because Family Safety Center being right next door to Child Advocacy Network is going to allow us some opportunities to seek some additional federal funds where we work together. And I think it will prove, as we move forward, that this will be a very successful partnership between the two and be able to really serve us more Tulsa's.
I think one of the things that's really important for us, we've been in a great partnership with CAN since we purchased the property from them in 2021. Oh, God, right in the middle of COVID. And they have, they have been. And they have been wonderful to work with. And we are in lockstep in that we feel that after the first year, we will be ready to do a joint strategic planning session so that the two organizations can pull our stakeholders, our board members, our partner agencies, government officials, our funders, and our survivors' voices together and talk about how we can best utilize the two organizations in that same location. We had an example yesterday where we had a young girl who had come in and was strangled by her father. Her teacher had brought her in. And we did a strangulation assessment, but we don't do too many of those for children. And the first thing we needed to do is to contact CAN and try to figure out how we make that connection because there are statutory ways that you have to go through, pathways that you have to go through to get kids into the interview process there. And it took us about an hour to figure it out, but we figured it out. And one of the great things is that she's in for her interview this morning there and she was, we were able to send over her forensic medical information first thing this morning so that they could review it before she got there. With us being literally, we're going to share a fence line and there will be a door in this fence. And we are talking with agencies about how we make those connections real. And one of the programs that she and I are working on jointly is where we place, I call them ombudsmen, for each organization in each other's building. And we are able to make those connections so that when we have something that arises like yesterday, we can just walk that young woman and her guardian through the gate, in the door, and it happens right then. And we don't have to spend an hour or two, or she doesn't have to wait 24 hours in order to be able to figure out what's really going on in that situation. So the strategic planning process for us after the first year is going to be really, really crucial and you all will be getting invitations to it because we definitely want your input. We think that in that location, we're going to have so many more clients because it's going to be so much more accessible with free parking, plenty of free parking, easy access from highways, driving, and lots of transit connections. So I'll stop and just answer any questions if you guys might have.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we've got several in the queue. So first up, we have Counselor Bellis.
I'm so excited about the new space and being able to co-locate, but also maybe not be as co-located with police courts, et cetera. Some of the people that I've spent time in the Family Safety Center with struggled where they, a lot of people end up sharing their location with their partners with their phones. And then they're like, well, if I bring my phone in with me and they see that I'm in this court setting in a really specific way, they'll think I might be filing all sorts of, you know, it just raised more concerns. And so still being able to co-locate and be somewhere else is huge. I'm curious with that, thinking about having, you know, this facility and then, you know, being Social Child Advocacy Network and it's, I mean, the amount of services and what you all will be able to do is amazing. Is there also, like, knowing that that kind of phone tracking is such a challenge? I'm trying to think about nearby places someone could park, if not those parking lots, where if they don't want to appear to be, like, this is a, you know, such a real issue that people are tracking their partner's movements.
Bowman Acres is just across, I mean, the alley, right? So you could always park in Bowman Acres and walk over if you need to.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, there's a shopping center there at the corner of 31st. And so they can park in that shopping center wherever and then walk on.
There's a Walgreens there.
Yeah, there's a grocery store.
Which all, of course, is so much more accessible than trying to make up a place to be downtown.
There's a number of reasons.
And you know, at some point, we may be able to, we may be able to get somebody to donate a golf cart so that we can transport. They can text us and we can transport them from the other part to where we are, right?
Which I know is also much more accessible.
Cross streets or stone, but, you know, that's stuff to think about as we get into the building. We expect it's going to be absolutely crazy the first six months. And as we try to adjust how we process people through pathways. So, you know, things like that, considerations like that are going to be very important.
And then do you all also, I know this is like speaking to Counselor Gilbert's tune too, as far as like kind of walkability, infrastructure over there with sidewalks and crossing and all of that, is there? I was just, I was just going to check to if there are other kind of city needs or crosswalks that need to be set up for you.
I was looking, you see Mr. Zaffary is here, but he's not. But no, there is a sidewalk along Sheridan. There is also intersection there with crosswalks there at 31st. So, and as Cheryl mentioned, there's also a quick trip there on the corner, which is a safe place. So plenty of, the infrastructure is there.
I'm so excited.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Gilbert.
If there's anybody else that wants to get before me, I'll go.
Okay, you want to be last? Okay, thank you. Next up was Counselor Dr. Wright.
Thank you, Chair Bush. Thank you for all that you do. I'm always so impressed with your leadership and the way that you're accomplishing. I was in the room when you were making that ask at OSU. So to hear that it's only $400,000 is incredible. And I hope you get the $2 million because I think what I heard is you don't own an endowment right now, right? And we definitely need that. You talked about federal impacts, but what about state impacts on these partners, family and children's and others?
Like, it's always a consideration. And we're staying in touch with everybody to figure out what's going on. The state of Oklahoma provides, well, there is, through the Victims of Crime Act, the federal government had a program, has had a program for years that funds the Victim of Crime Act and that is from fines and fees from federal crimes and punishments and forfeitures. And so that fund traditionally has funded all of the Department of Justice programming, the Bureau of Justice Affairs programming, Victims of Crime stuff. The state, each state receives a formula grant from those VOKA funds that have, and those funds have, unlike the city, Tulsa has a nice sinking fund. There is no sinking fund for VOKA. And the numbers of dollars that have been collected from fines and fees have been drastically reduced as the Justice Department has changed how we enforce and collect on those kinds of things. And so the federal government has had to provide at least 50% in backup funds to keep that at a certain level so that everybody gets a fair share of those dollars. Now there is an issue that the Congress may not, through this budget cycle, continue that gift, that budgetary allocation for VOKA funds. So, you know, everybody is kind of on tenterhooks because the state of Oklahoma receives those funds to the District Attorney's Council and the Attorney General's Office. And those funds are then applied for by every agency in the state who works with victims of crime. That includes DA offices, it includes other social service agencies, it's us, it's Parent-Child Center, it's nursing services. And in the last several years, our allocation was cut by 50%. And we have been at the same rate for the last three years. We're not quite sure what's going to happen with that. This year, we think we'll be okay this year, but future years are, you know, who knows? So there's a lot of lobbying, stuff going on among different states and DC to be able to shore up those funds because the feeling is that victims of crime really are due certain assists in order to become whole again, whether it's financially through the Victims Compensation Funds or whether it's from a social and physical, emotional health basis. So there's lots of lobbying that's going on about that.
We'll keep it, keep it on our radar too, especially we have Shane Stone for statewide stuff.
Absolutely.
We've got Counselor Bush who's got good connections down at the Capitol and knows who we need to reach out to. But we know that the Services Corridor on Sheridan, I think, will also help uplift some other things that are going on over there. And so that's also a positive impact for the whole community. Thank you for making these investments right there.
Thank you. Counselor Arch.
Thank you so much for this presentation and for the work that you all do. As someone who's been affected by domestic violence and knows those who have, the work is very important. I'm thinking about access to, you know, folks in my district. And the idea came to me, is there a way people can call and consult over their phones, maybe even over, just talk about that a little bit.
Oh, yeah, you can call our direct line, you know, it's, well, we're eight to five right now. We'll have extended hours when we, when we open. Divas does have a hotline that people can talk to for, to advocates directly in emergency situations. That's 24/7 and that number is 918-74-help-me.
743-5763.
That's it. And, but our number is 918-742-7480 and we maintain social media and our website where you can, we monitor that all the time so that we're able to respond over the computer if we need to. Or you can just call and talk to us. We answer a lot of questions because not everybody is ready to come in. They may just want to know about process. Or they may want us to come out and address some issue that they're seeing in the community that they want us to come out and talk about. We do a lot of community resource fairs and we have staff that are really, really good at that. And so, you know, if something comes up that you want us to be at, let us know, we'll be there. Absolutely.
Thanks so much.
I have a couple of questions. So I was wondering about your multilingual and cultural advocate connections and the different languages that you offer. I was looking at your website and it doesn't have any thing in, in kind of multilingual.
We use, in-house, we have staff that actually speak Spanish, several staff that are Spanish speakers. We have access to translation facilities, translation machine websites, headphones and those things. And we also have a special section and special opportunities for those who have hearing or speech issues. We're able to provide that in a confidential way for them to use as well.
And blind as well.
And blind. We've expanded our programming. We haven't really updated our website. We've been waiting to do that until we were further along with this building so that we would have everything that we're going to have in there online. But the translation piece of it is something that's very important. We do have lots of contacts in different cultural communities, Mong, Russian, French, Afghan, I mean Urdu, some of the languages. We even have some Ukrainian contacts. We have Ukrainian immigrants who are coming in for any kind of service. But we do have foreign language capacity that we can access.
And for the blind, we do have, you know, our signage. We've gone through all of our signage on the new building. We do have burial.
That's excellent. And the cultural advocates, because not every culture does, deals with trafficking or domestic violence in the same ways. And so are you guys?
Very much in tune with those communities. Yes, we operate.
So they can come on-site and?
Yes, we operate the Oklahoma Coalition Against Trafficking. And that's through a federal grant. And that has around 40 agencies and nonprofits that participate in that group. That includes some cultural representation as well. We do know that whenever there are any operations, the US Attorney or law enforcement or somebody will reach out to us and let us know what their needs are going forward. And we make those contacts to make sure those cultural advocates are there.
And TPS liaisons, you mentioned going through TPS. I just wanted to make sure that those were also in place.
And we can always do more. Yep.
Yeah, the need is always going to be there and our numbers just continue to increase. So we continue to improve.
Okay, quickly.
Yes, and so, and maybe this is just a comment. I think we just need to commit ourselves, so resources on the one side, but how in the world can we stop the abusers? How can we?
That's a really good question.
Right, exactly.
That includes a lot of systemic policy work.
And so, you know, it's, it's just, it's hard working, you know?
It's education and you have to start very young.
And prevention.
And prevention. We start, you know, we've got Camp Hope, which is for kids who've been exposed to violence. So a lot of these kids have seen one parent kill the other parent or they have been victims themselves. And they may or may not be with their original family, they may be with a guardian or foster family. We hold this camp year-round. We get with the families and the kids. We have about 90 kids in the system that we work with and their families. And once a month, we get with them and we have a curriculum that we follow. We do different activities throughout the community. And then during the summer, we have a camp where we actually take them to camp with counselors and health professionals and all of that with, again, with an adjudicated curriculum. A lot of it based on work that Dr. Chan Hellman did at OU Tulsa on hope and measuring hope and resiliency. We see statistic changes in these kids and their hope levels. This is, this will be our 10th season and we actually have kids who are now counselors to our kids who went through the original program 10 years ago, which is really pretty cool. So it's education and I'll tell you what, I got to give a shout out to TPD and their Domestic Violence Unit. They have come up with a program, it's called a Domestic Caution Indicator. I can't tell you the details of it, but I will tell you that they have arrested 162 more perpetrators in the last two months because of this special program that would not have otherwise been arrested. And doing that to show two things, it shows survivors and victims that law enforcement takes them seriously and is going to follow up on this stuff. And number two, it shows the offenders, that you, just because you leave the scene of a crime before a law enforcement officer gets there, it doesn't mean you're off the hook. We will find you.
They're going to hunt you down.
And so those two things make a difference. And then the domestic, domestic violence docket that we have for felonies and for misdemeanors also make a difference. And then there are some legislative things that are going through. I'm not sure the status of this one bill on HB 1273. It had to do with an alternative and a pilot program that would address those less lethal, high-risk offenders in a batter's intervention program treatment. That would be 26 weeks instead of 52 weeks.
It didn't get assigned to committee this year.
It didn't?
No.
Well, that's good.
But it was introduced.
But it was introduced and it was a really good, it was a really good start at kind of winnowing out those really multiple offenders, high-risk that are over and over. They're viewed from one victim to the next victim to the next. As opposed to somebody who has a one-time meltdown and something happens and you never see them again. Those two individuals are totally different individuals most of the time. And the 52-week program is literally every day, you know, every class for 52 weeks, very expensive. If you miss it, you have to start all over again. And there's only about a 30% completion rate for those offenders that don't go through the Accountability Docket at the courts. And that completion rate is about 75%. But not everybody goes through the Accountability Docket. So we feel like if we're able to give the misdemeanors who are not charged with serious crimes or it's a first-time crime, the opportunity to do a 26-week program and they successfully complete that and they don't go on to reoffend, then we've got a pretty good mix of programming. But the key is education when it starts young, talking about healthy relationships. And it's a very complicated topic to talk about in this day and age right now. So, you know, mentors are very important. You know, we look at organizations like My Brother's Keeper and 100 Black Men and all of these groups that are working with some of our, some of our young men in the community about healthy relationships and about taking responsibility and all these kinds of things. And they become very important partners with us in particular and working with our young male population. And I think the other thing is that when you have supportive law enforcement agencies, not just Tulsa, but Broken Arrow and Owasso and Jinx, because we do serve the other communities, that understand the dynamics of domestic violence, that it's not just an angry outburst that got out of control. There really is a lot more to it. And they understand that there are services available and that getting people into services is the key to their safety. And they're promoting that and they're referring to us. That makes a lot. That makes a lot of difference, too. We know that the people who suffer from homicides by their partners, only about 96% of those have, or 96% of those people have never sought services for what's going on in their, in their lives, ever. And we know that we can get, if we can get people in and at least do safety planning and give some options, that we can keep them safer for a longer period of time and offer options.
Well, I know we're about out of time here, so I'm going to pass it over here. I just want to say thank you. I know I did run a couple of bills that dealt with this, and we also had some bills that never saw the light of day, continual issue, but appreciate the hard work that you all have done. And of course, as they said, keep us apprised here at the city, but if there's more help needed at the state, still got a foot in there so I can help you out there.
Well, thank you for letting us come and present to you all. We really appreciate it.
Yes. And Counselor.
Yeah, I just, I just want to close this with how, how much especially Ms. Stewart does for our community in, in running the programs that she does. And Ms. Conner, thank you so much for being on her board and keeping her in line.
It's hard.
I don't know if that's probably.
But as, coming from someone who did have to file the protective order on a stranger, it's, it's something, going into your center was kind of, it was mixed feelings, not knowing what to expect, right? And so when I'm going through a personal walkthrough of this and sitting to fill out all the paperwork, you're in a cube in the spot that they are in now, in the basement of the police department.
Very intimidating.
It is very intimidating. You're in a cube. You don't know who's next to you, but you can hear everything that is being asked or any conversation. I mean, you don't hear, but you can hear conversations that are being had. I was there by myself because I didn't know what I was getting into when I filed my police report. And one of the questions on there was, do you want someone of faith to come and help? And I thought that was going to be somebody walking through every step with me. But when I checked off that box, someone, it was like going through the drive-through. Someone immediately appeared and sat there with me as I went through the rest of the application. So, but the new building is going to be phenomenal. It's going to be offering great services to those individuals that need those services, especially having the courtroom in the building. That is going to be huge. Because having to walk through the courthouse is intimidating in itself. And so just having that support in the building and then walking through with you to the courtroom to make things final is going to be a win-win and is going to help with that healing process. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you both very much. Appreciate you.
We appreciate you. Come see us on a good day.
On a good day.
A good day.
For a visit.
All right, the last item is, we're adjourned, and you want us back here in five, Lori?